Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the November 21st meeting of the Capitola City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Here.
And Mayor Brown.
Here. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
The only change I will note is unfortunately Chief Dally is in the horrible traffic right now over Highway 17 that unfortunately also affected our city attorney. So we may be needing to shift around the presentations a little bit around that.
Sure, no problem. We'll absolutely come back to it. With that, we will move on to presentations. And our first presentation is Item 3A, Presentation of the 2024 Plain Air Art Competition Winners. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am here with great excitement to do a presentation on what was the ninth Capitola Plain Air that was held in October. It went from October 21st to the 27th. I've got some photos of the week-long event that we'll just kind of go through. But we are here to present to you the winners of the of the event. So you can go, keep going. So like I said, this is some of the actual action shots from the meet and greet that were held at the Espinade. Got some lovely photos. Go ahead. We had palace out and then, oh, the window is covering. So we have our, this is all of the individuals that placed through the event. What was really exciting about this was that there, our first place was a new attendee and there were five new honorable mentions had never attended this before. Our second place winner was also returning after a long absence. All of the artists together that placed in our three placements. And if you look on the other side here, you'll actually see here in chambers with us, the first place winner and the title of that piece is New Brighton Trails. It's the large one. And the smaller one, the title of that piece by Will Mahler is Bright New Brighton. And John Hewitt was the first place winner. More photos. And there were a lot of volunteers that came together in order to make this event happen. We couldn't have done it without any of them, so we wanted to take a minute to thank them as well. And with that, I am joined here by our Vice Chair of the Art and Cultural Commission, who is the chair of this event. We are available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Questions on this end? No? You have a comment? Sure, go ahead.
I would just like to say thanks to the Art and Cultural Commission, Nikki and her staff, and especially Lori Hill. Great to see this come back and hopefully continues to keep growing like it has. Awesome.
Lori, would you like to make some comments as well?
Yes, Lori Hill, and thank you, Nikki, for that wonderful visual presentation. It kind of captured the event for everybody. I want to thank the council and the city for their continued support of this event. Capitola Plain Air was originally made possible as a result of Art and Cultural Commission's vision and hard work by many volunteers over the years. And I've been proud for my association with the event. For nine years, Capitola Plain Air has uniquely engaged our community and visitors of all ages in an up-close visual arts experience in the heart of our village that closed with an exhibition that displayed over 200 paintings showcasing Capitola through the eyes of 40 artists. Doesn't get much better than that. As a result, Capitola now owns a collection of 20 pieces of original art from this event. And I hope one of these days that all of those pieces of art in that collection can be displayed for public enjoyment. It's lovely to see this here now, but I know that there's many more that are hiding someplace else. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further comments? No? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you to the Art and Cultural Commission. Congratulations to all of the artists and to our winners. We're very excited to have your art here in chambers. As mentioned, we will be coming back to Item 3B. So we'll move on now to Item 4, Additional Materials.
Staff received numerous additional materials for tonight's agenda. For Item 5, one email was received after publication of the Agenda Packet. For Item 8A, 26 emails were received after publication of the Agenda Packet. And for Item 8B, two emails were received after publication of the Agenda Packet. All of the emails mentioned as additional materials are available for public review in the online version of our Agenda Packet. However, due to the timing of some of the more recent additions, they are not available for public review in print format, just because some of them arrived within 10 minutes of the meeting's start time.
Thank you. Okay, we will go now to oral communications by members of the public. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any item not on tonight's agenda that is within the purview of the council. If you would like your name recorded in the minutes, please state it at the beginning of your comments and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Charlie Thomas. I've been in Capitola 52 years, same house, Park Avenue area. I have noticed that, two things, the entrance into Capitola down Monterey, that road is looking really funky. I mean, it's got, it really needs to be repaved. When I see you spending money on doing the sidewalks, which I've appreciated very much, especially one on Park Avenue. And I see redoing the corner on Park Avenue now at the top of the hill. But I think it'd be really, really nice, since that's one of the main entrances into Capitola in the village, that that road really needs to be repaired. It's really bumpy and it's cracking and, and the same area, I'm watching yesterday a lady out there weeding all along the road and stuff on the bottom of the wall with that retaining wall where the, and I thanked her very much for doing that. She said, well, no one else will do it, so I might as well do it. Because, you know, she's proud of living here as well. That's, that's simple, I think. The second thing is that I saw that you guys were contemplating changing or removing and rebuilding the Stockton Bridge. That's correct. Is that, I guess you can answer, but you can say yes or no. But I mean, I'm amazed at that idea, considering that that bridge is on postcards, everything else in this town. Plus, what a fiasco that would be if we shut that bridge off for a length of time to rebuild it. The people on the east side would have a hard time getting to the west side. So Bay Avenue under the freeway would be really chaos as it is right now, and which we're going to be discussing later on with the Bay-Hill intersection. But I think that after living here for all these years and I've watched the floods go through and I worked with the Red Cross and I worked with the city on a lot of different departments over the years through my company, that in SoCal, when they were having that problem, that what they did, they put a cherry picker out there and they were just pulling what logs and stuff were causing the problem after the first year of flooding, which they didn't do that before, they realized that if they put a tractor out there with the capacity of lifting out the logs and that the log jams went away. And for the amount of money it would cost to do that, compared to the amount of money it would cost and the chaos that would create to try to replace the Stockton Bridge, I mean, I, it's no comparison. And so my recommendation would just be to, you know, take a really good look at that and, and just to, I'm sure the city capital can afford to put a tractor out there to pull logs and so forth in order to avoid a log jam and flooding in the village. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, city council members. My name is Peter Wilk. And since the current city council term is coming to an end soon, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank two-term mayor Kristin Peterson-Brown for her eight years of exemplary service. Her efforts on the Mass Transit District Board, Regional Transportation Committee, Ambag Chair, Financial Advisory Committee, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, are, all while holding down a full-time job is awesome. She has set a benchmark of community service that we can only hope that the new council members, beginning in January, can begin to approach. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Best of luck, Mayor Brown, on your future endeavors.
Thank you, Peter.
Good evening. Kathy Howard. I live in Cliffwood Heights and I'm addressing the board because we have a new sign in the park, Hidden Park, that says, Keep Your Dogs on Leash. 62 years ago, when they made that development, it was in the white slip that went to the real estate of California that said there would be no dogs in that park. There are a lot of us that are very dismayed over that. We did send in letters. And one of the things about that is, is when it was developed, the reason there were no dogs was because everyone who lived there could leave their dog at home. It also makes it safe for the children. I don't know if any of you have little children or grandchildren or great-grandchildren, but we take them to the park to play. And now, some of the neighbors have movies of dog poop all over that's never been cleaned up. That was the purpose. We would like to put our children down and let them play and not worry about them falling in dog poop because someone was too lazy to pick it up. Noble Park has been recommended. There are already people who walk their dogs in that park. So I would like you to remove that sign that allows people to use Hidden Park as a dog park and at least, at least one space for people who don't care for dogs, children who are afraid of dogs, and people who would just like to have a nice relaxing place to be without worrying about some dog coming over and running over you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comments?
I'm moving.
No worries. Take your time. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Goran Klopic. I play basketball almost every day at Gate Street Park here locally. It's a beautiful park. I was contacted, I think, two or three days ago by somebody. I'm still trying to find out what happened. Somebody tried to sell me 7.7 grams of methamphetamine. Methamphetamine is a very addictive drug, as you know. Police officers know that. I've worked for a PD department overseas in Europe, in Switzerland, where I'm a citizen from, where I did the army. I just want to make you aware of that, that things like that are happening in Capitola or Capitola County. I'm still trying to find out what happened. Thank you very much. Take care.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. TJ Welch. Lack of trust in government is at an all-time high and Capitola is no exception. I want to look a little bit at their lack of integrity and transparency, I think. Major O passed in 2012, 1.1 million a year with no sunset. He told us it would be used for roads, but yet zero or very little is being used toward those roads. And yet today, our roads are in total disrepair, disrepair, I'm sorry. So where is it all being spent? Major F passed in 2016, long before the 23 storm. He told us it was going to build a stronger and better wharf. There was no discussion about removing our restaurant. Over $8 million tax dollars of revenue has been brought in, but $3.5 million has been used towards a wharf, yet no restaurant. So where is it? The rest of it being spent? Major Y, he tells us it was needed to give our employees a much-needed raise, but since, but since when do city council members, pet projects, capital improvements, and community grants have over priority over employee wages and benefits? This is not the way a competent city develops a budget. Major L, now known as City Municipal Code 8.72, was overwhelmingly passed by the residents. The city manager, city attorney, Mayor Brown, Councilmember Peterson are all ignoring the city law and the will of the community. The city manager and city attorney stated it is vague and therefore unconstitutional, pretty interesting since they're the ones that actually wrote the law. Council members have pushed their activist agendas by ignoring the residents for far too long. Issues like bypassing our planning commission for a joint CDP, pushing the rail trail through the city properties, making policy changes while hiding it behind government speech, calling our cops racist, not listening to the concerns of families regarding children, just to name a few. Now we embark on the new housing element where once again, the city council and staff are pushing an agenda based on false narratives that will change our beach town forever. Then you have Councilman Peterson, who gave $15,000 from the city council for his not-fair-wages nonprofit. What has that money done to help City Capitola? Actually, the entire premise of fair wages is kind of ludicrous when you get a sticker if you can show that you pay your employees 36.64 an hour. What small business in Capitola can do that? Well, I think actually we need an apology and pay the $15,000 back to our community. It's time that our city manager and city council set aside the bias politics and represent the residents of Capitola with transparency, integrity, and honesty. And you can start tonight by listening as we talk about Bay Street and our Parks and Rec Department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any further public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back and we are going to staff and city council comments. And we'll start with staff.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I don't have much of an update this evening, just the one thing is tomorrow, tomorrow we're looking at some rain forecast and we're hoping to get the creek open, relying on our great Public Works crew to be out there in the rain, timing it just right so we save the village from flooding while also not draining out the lagoon. So kudos to them for all the work.
Yes, thank you. Our Public Works team is always working so hard when the storm season starts and really all through the year, but thank you for the work that you're doing in advance of the storms. We will go now to council comments.
I'll piggyback off of the city manager. The weather's coming. We know that we're in due for a lot. Just want to remind everybody that last year, County 911 started a new warning system called Cruz-Aware. If you go to our city webpage, you can hit the links, sign up for Cruz-Aware, and then you'll be notified for anything happening within the county and within the city of Capitola, such as the huge wave events or potential runoff. But again, Cruz-Aware, it sounds like it's a pretty good thing. Also, everybody that used to be on the old red alert, that's all been transferred. But if you haven't, go on the website and look for Cruz-Aware. Good program.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. So just a couple of updates. The last time I, we checked in was to, I promised my colleagues here I would check in with 3CE about opportunity for program dollars to be utilized for the EV charging stations. It looks like there will be some movement on there and some opportunity for funds there. So I can, I would like to bring that back on the agenda. Secondly, Councilmember Clark and I are both liaisons for youth here in the community. And I met with my youth liaison who has shown interest in the finance department and our, our Sam's department, Sam Zeller, our attorney's department. So she's going to actually be doing informational interviews with our staff and then she's going to be doing a tour soon. So if you see a youth around, especially in Art and Cultural, she'd like to come visit that group as well as the finance advisory committee. So if you see a student walking around, please say hello. And then lastly, I just attended my orientation as the president for the Monterey Bay region for the League of Cities. And we set priorities that actually looked very similar to some of the outcomes we're seeing with our direction that we're bringing forward for the, for the city of Capitola. So more to come on that in January. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on now to Item 7, our consent agenda. Items on consent will be enacted by one motion in the form listed on the agenda unless a member of council would like to remove any of the items for separate discussion. And if not, we will entertain a motion.
I can move the consent items 7A through E.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries unanimously. We will go now to Item 8A, Bay Avenue and Hill Street Traffic Safety Update. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. By council request, we're bringing back the Bay Avenue and Hill Street Quick Build. I have a few introductory, just some background slides, and then I'm going to kick it off to Frederick, who is from Kimley Horn, who is our traffic engineering consultant. Next slide, please. So the objective of this Quick Build project was to enhance safety at this intersection. We all know that this intersection has been an area of concern since 2004, when the Bay Hill Shopping Center was developed. In 2022, Kimley Horn conducted an analysis, which was reviewed by city council in a subcommittee and over 2003, 2004, before we implemented the Quick Build this summer. Next slide, please. Those Quick Build features put in July and August of this year included a lane reduction, enhanced crosswalks, and temporary bulbouts, mostly paint and temporary measures that could be easily implemented. The purpose of this is to do a test phase, a trial to see, gather feedback and see what works, see what doesn't, something that's easily adaptable. And it was really safety-focused. We prioritize safety over traffic flow here. That was part of that analysis done by Kimley Horn and discussed at length with both council and the community. It is an ongoing evaluation. The intent is to have that in place for 12 to 18 months and really, again, to have that balance of improving safety for pedestrians and bicyclists while still having acceptable traffic flows. Next slide, please. As council knows and as the community probably knows, we've gotten quite a bit of feedback, a lot during those first few weeks where there was an adjustment period of the new intersection, but also ahead of this meeting. The main concerns were safety perceptions. They were pretty mixed view on whether the intersection was actually safer, which was our objective of this project. Some minor adjustments were made prior to this meeting. The bike lanes were enhanced and there was some clearer striping made. There was some additional striping suggestions that we are looking for a few dry weeks to implement. Next slide, please. We have had some compounding traffic issues prior to and while implementing this project. As we all know, the Capitola Avenue Bridge is out for the Bus on Shoulder project with the RTC along Highway 1. It's been closed since March and isn't anticipated to reopen until winter of 2025. And then our Park Avenue on ramp to Highway 1 has been closed since September and is expected to reopen by the end of the year. So we don't have a regular traffic flow going on right now and won't for quite some time. Next slide. So during this period, it was requested that we don't take data for the corridor study, which is also currently underway and should be coming to council at the beginning of next year. However, we did collect data for the purposes of this meeting this evening to evaluate current safety because obviously in that in-between time before those other traffic projects are wrapped up, we still have to have a safe intersection for our residents. So the data we collected in the past few weeks was specifically for purposes of discussion this evening. So our next steps is to have this meeting today. We are open to adjusting the intersection based on the feedback we get and always to prioritize safety, considering our layout and right-of-way constraints. There's only so many square feet in this intersection to do so many improvements. So with that, I'm going to toss this over to Frederick to go over the data that we've collected and some of the insights we've gathered with this project so far.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Yep, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Frederick Venter with Kimley Horn. And we're going to share with you a little bit of information on newer traffic volumes, what's happening with intersection operations. And then we did some drone footage above the intersection and, you know, recorded some data. We're going to share some of those results with you. And then just a reminder of some of the next steps that the city's planning. Next slide, please. So the objective is really to continue to gather community input. We did reduce the number of lanes, you know, and look at the traffic flow, enhance the pedestrian bike access, safety, and visibility, while still maintaining an acceptable level of traffic operation. So we're going to share that data later. So this shows the before conditions for maybe some of us that need to be some refreshments. So Bay Avenue was a four-lane facility, through lanes, turn lanes, and then the driveway into Nobiel and Hill Street. The picture on the right, top right, shows sort of what a typical operations would look like. And then the bottom one is the evening snapshot of the intersection. Next slide, please. So the Quick Build layout took the through lanes, took one through lane out, merged the traffic. We still kept the left turn lanes. We enhanced the crosswalks. We striped some bike lanes through the intersection. And then on the approaches, we created buffered bike facilities, right? And then we created what I would call a protected intersection corner by using the striping, the blue and purple striping on the corners. Also, the stop signs were illuminated on the outside, so there's like little flasher lights that come on so people can see it better. I think those were the primary improvements. Next slide, please. And again, some of the improvements in photos, you can see the bullets that were installed, green bike striping, enhanced crosswalks. Next slide, please. So bicycle volumes, the before volumes are at the top and the after volumes at the bottom. You can see in the morning, there were quite a few increased bikes that we counted from 24 to 49, almost 50. But for the midday and the PM peak, the volume stayed about the same. For pedestrian volumes, next slide, please. The morning went down, so I don't know, those people maybe started riding their bikes because it's a reverse action, right? But again, in the midday and the afternoon, the volumes are about the same. The afternoon picked up a little bit, but about the same volumes. Like we see people walking, going, beds and bikes moving through the intersection. Next slide, please. So this is traffic operations in the morning. So the arrows sort of outside the graphics is the number of cars entering the intersection. And then you can see there's like a level of service box and then the number in the little box at the approaches, so the four and the four, those are a number of cars in the queues. So the 22 datas at the top and the 24 datas at the bottom. So as we expected, you know, we reduced the number of lanes, so the level of service would get worse. Volumes stayed about the same. That's not, that changes probably within the margin of error in what we would expect. And the queues got a little longer because operations got a little worse. Midday peak, next slide, please. So the midday peak higher volumes, 635, 538, slightly less. Again, the level of service got a little worse, queues got longer, and that's in the southbound direction, northbound direction, a reduction in volumes as well. Next slide, please, PM. So for the PM peak, reduction in volumes in the, in the southbound direction, so people coming from the freeway, and then increase in volumes towards the freeway, slight increase. Again, queues getting longer, level of service getting worse. Some of those queues, I've been out there a couple of times where I can see in the afternoon the queue would spill back all the way to almost the freeway, but it would dissipate, right? And it, it may be some of the signal operations at the interchange that does that. And of course, there's very slow movement. So the feed from the freeway is very low, right, because of the congestion on the freeway. Next slide, please. And just a reminder that with the actions we took, we reduced the number of conflicts from 41 to 31. So basically 10, 10 is almost a quarter less, right? Conflict points between vehicles and vehicles and vehicles and beds and beds and bikes. Next slide, please. So this is the data for collisions that we gathered for about five years, and five years is the norm to sort of, you can see crash patterns in over a five-year period. So we had the 12 reported vehicle collisions in the intersection. Next slide, please. In, during the time that was open, so from August to now, there were two reported accidents. One was of two vehicles, one making a turn, crashing with another vehicle. The other vehicle hit the stop sign right in the middle of the median, so not sure why that occurred. We cannot, because there's only two data points here, you cannot make any statistical finding, you know? If you look at all crash data, you will see right now, the whole country crashes are much worse than they were in 2019, even though we may drive a little less. It's just the nature of what's happening and a lot of us think COVID's main cause of it, because people started driving more reckless and faster. But yeah, so no, don't try to read anything in the crash data, but yes, there were two accidents. Next slide, please. Just the location of the accidents, so the five years on the left-hand side and those two new ones on the right-hand side, right in the middle of the accident, of the intersection. Next slide, please. So if you can click at the bottom, there should be a little play button to play this little video. Yep, there we go. So this is the drone footage that we have that will show you what we recorded. And you can see the vehicles and the beds going through. And you can see that vehicle that's making the left turn, right? It got fairly close to the other vehicle. It got fairly close to the other vehicle, right? So we call that sort of a near miss situation. And what it is, is really trying to determine, are there close calls that may result in accidents, right? So this is just an image, it's real, and it's, I'm going to show you a bunch of data that was collected based on this analysis that we did. Next slide, please. Thank you. There we go. So the most interesting finding from the analysis was a bunch of rolling stops through the intersection. Actually, if you go stand there, I witnessed it, right? So you will see on average, more than half the people don't come to a complete stop. They do the California stop, right? Now, the next question is, is that a huge concern? Yes, it's illegal, but I'm going to show you some slides where there's not a concern in terms of the gaps between vehicles, those near misses, right? Do we see potentially accidents that are prone to happen just because of all the rolling stops? But the rolling stops are definitely, that was a surprise from the data. We didn't expect to see that. Next slide, please. So the, the yellow line shows the vehicles that did the rolling stop and was recorded as having a near miss. So we recorded here the near misses being a vehicle. Let's say there's two vehicles crossing path, that there was less than a two-second gap between them. The national average is actually 1.5 seconds. I use two just because it gives us a little bit of a different idea and it tells us, you know, what's happening in the intersection. But what this graphic shows us, that there's no correlation between vehicles rolling through the intersection and vehicles being involved in a near miss situation. And really the finding is because the yellow line doesn't follow the bar chart, right? Next slide, please. So this is the actual near miss rate for the intersection. So it's vehicles that were very close to an accident, less than one and a half second gap between them. And overall, you'll see the average is between 6% and 7%. The pink chart on, on the right, which is low, right? It's not, it's not a value to be concerned about. We also got to remember that every, every movement through the intersection is fairly slow because people come to the stop, whether rolling or going through at, you know, a full stop or just rolling through it, but these are still very low numbers. And the, the national government is currently working on what is a good rate to have, so I cannot tell you it's too high or how does it compare to other intersections, but it's not high. Next slide, please. This data shows us the movements where we saw the highest near misses. And as it would be expected, it's a through and a left turn, and it's the movements out of the Nob Hill site and vehicles from Bay Avenue making left turns, conflicts with through vehicles. Next slide, please. So just a summary of what we observed. Top one is bike and pedestrian safety. Oh, yes, what I forgot to say is there were no pedestrian bicycle conflicts observed with the analysis that we do, which is great. That was like the best result from the, from the analysis that we found. So we see an improvement in the pedestrian bike safety just from the conflict points that we removed, but also from the data that we observed. The crossing exposure, since we shortened the crosswalks, right? There's less exposure for a vehicle to, or a pedestrian to a vehicle. We know that the intersection level of service got worse, but we saw the volumes were down a little bit. So if the volumes do go up, you know, the level of service are going to worsen more. And then the queues went up as well, which we expected, right? So we said it's a balance between safety and, and, and operations. Next slide. So some of the next steps is to continue outreach and obtain community input. The city is going to do the Bay Avenue corridor study in 2025. And then, of course, start pursuing funding opportunities to potentially implement the Bay Avenue corridor, which will include this intersection. So at that stage, we will take this quick build and turn it into a more permanent intersection improvement. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go to questions now? Questions? No questions? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Good question. I was just curious regarding bicycle and pedestrian volumes. It showed like AM, a PM. How were those numbers derived? Is that an average over a certain amount of days or a single day or what?
So we, we count typically over a peak period, and those would be two hours. So in the morning would be from 6:00 to 8:00, in the midday from 12:00 to 2:00, in the afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00. I got to go back and see exactly what time that was. And then we will take the highest one-hour volume out of that two-hour volume, and we only count for one day. But it will be a typical workday. It will not be a one day or a Friday. It won't be a holiday week. So it presents an average travel pattern that we would see on the network. It's acceptable standards for how we do traffic impact studies.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Okay, so Yori, I had a question about the potential data on near misses between cars and pedestrians. You said none were observed.
None were.
All the near misses was between car and car. Okay, that's good. If we were to go back to the two lanes, right now, we have one of the lanes before the intersection is a bike buffered bike lane. And then on the other side of the intersection, it's a buffered bike lane too. So where do the bike lanes go if we go back to a, to a two-lane street?
So we would probably remove the buffer, but we could push the bikes out to where they were. You had a class two previously, but it was not a buffered bike lane, and we didn't have all the protection and we didn't bring the bikes closer so they can be better observed, right? So what would happen? You would get back the four-lane facility, but the bikes would have a standard class two with no protection between themselves and vehicles.
And, and I can't remember, forgive me, on the other side of the intersection, if I remember correctly, wasn't the bike lane in between the two traffic lanes or was it still on the far side of both lanes?
So on the south, it was still on the far side. It did cross just south of the intersection where you have a little right-hand pocket, it did cross over, right? But that, and that's still there, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then have we reached out to anyone at the Bay Avenue Senior Apartments? I know that originally, you know, there's a lot of kind of misconceptions that this project was developed as a result of the tragic accident that we saw over in the shopping center. But really, this was an ongoing discussion that we had based on pedestrian safety concerns quite often coming from the folks at the Bay Avenue Senior Apartments. So I'm wondering if we've heard anything from them? Have we reached out to them? Any feedback?
So we have been keeping track of all the email feedback and calls that we've been getting from residents, mostly overwhelming concerns, but the ones that were thinking as or appreciating the improvements, quite a few of them were from the senior center. I'd say probably to five or six of the, a lot of emails that we've received. Also, ahead of this meeting, we did contact the commercial businesses and they have not responded to us either way. So they have not given us any feedback, positive or negative at this point.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further questions? None? Okay, all right, thank you so much. With that, we will go to public comments. Now is the opportunity to provide public comment on this item. You will have three minutes. Please feel free to state your name if you'd like it recorded in the record.
Here I am again.
Welcome back.
Thanks. Well, you know, Capitola is my home and, like I said, I've lived here for about 52 years and that intersection's always been a tough spot anyway. And so I understand what you're trying to do, but I think what's happened is that you've created a real bottleneck. I've seen people actually turn off, which is now the only way to get into the parking lot in the Nob Hill is prior to the intersection. I've seen them turn off in there and go through the parking lot to come back on, to come back on to Bay Avenue because the backup is so far up to the highway. Actually, and there were times when people come off the freeway and they've been unable to get on Bay Avenue because people are coming from SoCal under the highway, and then they're all backed up because they only have one lane. I do think that before, when there were two lanes there, I don't recall ever having traffic issues like that. So that's one thing. And of course, the second problem, I think, is we have a lot of kids now on these motorized bikes and they're just flying through there. I mean, they go through there, and I'm amazed that there hasn't been more accidents or reported accidents maybe. But I think that's something too that we have to respond to a little bit, you know, to the city is that, number one, when there were two lanes there, I saw a lot less traffic congestion in the intersection, a lot less. And people were able to pull in Nob Hill in the first driveway or the second driveway. Now we just go on the first driveway, which I've seen then people then get in the other driveway and they kind of, if they don't know their way around, they seem to have a hard time getting in Nob Hill once they pass the first Nob Hill exit or entrance, if you will. But yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough call, but it is a real mess. So I, I would like to think that we go back to two lanes if that's possible, you know? And also, once again, maybe we didn't do something about these kids on the e-bikes. Okay, I really sincerely, I mean, when I was a kid, we did, you know, we would do all kinds of crazy things too. And that was a long time ago, however, but, but nonetheless, you know, the, the kids on e-bikes now, they're just like, one, they're driving motor scooters is what they're driving, they're not driving bicycles anymore. And, you know, there's a license required to drive a motor scooter, but there's no license required for these kids who are 10, 12 years old, often riding these e-bikes and not really paying much attention. And that intersection has even created a bigger problem for all of them because SoCal High School kids now are coming down Bay Avenue after school and it gets really, really pretty crazy right there. So, yeah, is there an easy answer? No, I'm sure there's not, you know? And I'm sure you're trying to make it better, but I think two lanes in that intersection was better than the one lane that we used today. And I'm not sure what all the blue is about. So that's, I think there's a lot of questions about that too. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us on the agenda. My name's Tori Del Favre, and I have a kid that rides his bike to SoCal High, and he has never owned an e-bike and he will never will on my watch, so there's one. So my, my challenge is more for the data. I know you guys have gotten a ton of public feedback on this, on this project, and, and I'm firmly in the camp that this project doesn't have the intended effect. The data basically stopped at Bay and, and Hill Street, and like center's impacted, crossroads is impacted. So while, you know, the drone photo that's shown there is, is neat, it's not showing the full picture of what's happening with this intersection. So, I mean, if you're going to lean into data, like I'd like a study that actually shows the full impact of this intersection. Along with that, a study being done for one day, I mean, it could have been Bike to School Day for SoCal Elementary. A teacher should have, could have said, "I'm going to give out free bike bagels if you ride your bike to school today." I mean, the swing between 60 and 30 people on their bike that day, that's not really something to lean into for this project. So if we're going to use data to make decisions on this project, like I'd like data that's a little deeper and a little better and a little more comprehensive. And Kimberly Horn, I do like you. You've done nice, nice things for safety schools, so I mean, I'm not trying to bust chops on you. I have no idea how much money you got paid to do the study, but if, if data's our, our turning point, let's get better and more comprehensive data.
Thank you.
Can't say I love the intersection. I understand what you're trying to do. And I totally agree with the previous speaker. I'm a frequent shopper at that small shopping center, and it is a very dangerous place to be a pedestrian in there and a dangerous place to pull in and out of parking because of exactly what people have observed, that if people cannot get in the lane that they want because of the backup, they pull into the shopping center and they zip around. So I would, I think it'd be valuable to get the comments from the businesses, and I think it'd be valuable to gather some data with regards to that redirection of traffic also through the crossroads. I think that's definitely an impact. And I'm not a traffic engineer. What would happen if we took out the crosswalk between Pete's and the opposite corner of Bay? So we would only have one crosswalk crossing Bay to pay attention to. Because I think part of the challenge for all the drivers in that intersection is there's just so much to look out for. And maybe if we eliminated one of the crosswalks, which I don't ever really see that many people crossing there, maybe that would reduce maybe some of the distractions for the drivers. And the last item is, I would like some input from emergency response with regards to ambulances and fire and police protection, trying to get through that intersection when the key is very, very long. What is the plan for them when the, the cars are backed up and they have no place to go?
Thank you. Additional public comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'd like to echo the comments made, but in addition, add a couple of things. As someone who frequently finds himself unfortunately being southbound on Highway 1 around 5 o'clock at night and having to take the exit for Bay, I find that what oftentimes will happen is that because if I am in the far right lane, I can make the right-hand turn, but then I am in the lane that has to turn into the parking lot. I know because I live here that I need to get over immediately into the center lane, otherwise I can't go straight. But a lot of vehicles, a lot of drivers don't know this. So as a consequence, what we're seeing is cars that are in the center lane turning right will be in the straight lane that allows them to go straight up Bay. On the other hand, cars that are in the far right-hand lane and wish to go straight up will cut in front. And that not only, that creates very, very significant hazardous conditions, but also as someone has previously said, it impacts the traffic on center. And this is where it's frustrating for us too because we live on, I live on Riverview. We come out of Riverview, go up to center, turn right on center, hit Bay Avenue to turn left. What we now see is cars that are speeding up Bay Avenue much faster rate than they normally did because they're frustrated from having to wait long in line as they are. So traffic is coming faster. It's just created a number of different hazardous situations. I would like to, and I think most of us here, would like to go back to the two lanes. I think that was the safest approach. And we could still have a good bicycle lane on the right-hand side, but allowing that gets rid of this problem with people cutting through the shopping center, people cutting off people on the, on their left, people speeding up Bay Avenue because they're frustrated, people having a difficult time turning left out of Center Street to make a right-hand turn, a left-hand turn onto Bay. So that's why I would strongly urge you to please go back to the two lanes. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is John McHenry. I live at 207 Monterey Avenue. I'll just take a second. You don't even have to put the timer on. I don't know what the study cost, but it was a waste of money. You go back to the way it was and it'll be, people won't be driving all over like everybody said, taking shortcuts, going through Nob Hill and everything else. It worked just fine the way it was. I guess it all started because somebody got hurt, I don't know, but it's a crazy situation now, and I think you should go back the way it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, any further public comment? Please come on up.
I just wanted to echo as well, I have a kid, kids who go to SoCal Elementary and New Brighton, and that's the peak time between there, and it takes my wife 20 minutes sometimes to make that trip sometimes. They get out at the same time. It makes it impossible for us to get both of our kids at the same time. And we don't feel comfortable to burn their bikes either way. And it's not just the detours that you guys have heard about, it's going up Rosedale, down into Hill as well. Every which way is being impacted by this because it's coming from a great place. Everybody wants that intersection to be safe. We can make the freeway safe too by reducing the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, but that just doesn't make any sense. This whole thing doesn't make any sense. There's other ways to make safety than like make a city-created bottleneck. There's already plenty of structural bottlenecks around town that everybody has to contend with. This one is completely unnecessary. There's a lot of different ways that we can do this safer, in a more common sense way to create a traffic jam in a city that already has way too many traffic jams we can't control. This one we can't control. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, seeing none. We will bring it back to council for discussion and a vote. We'll start on this end. Councilmember Peterson, any comments, discussion?
Yeah, I, I guess I just have a couple of thoughts about this. I think we spent a lot of money trying to make this. trying to make this intersection safer. And we are still studying the results of this, which so far has been reasonably in line with the predictions of the traffic engineers that we paid to do this study. And I think it would be very premature to pull the plug on this before we have the data that we really need to make an educated decision about the traffic. I know it has increased. There are issues. But I think it would be a huge waste of city funds to pull the plug at this time without knowing the full picture.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brooke?
Yeah, so a couple of things. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this back earlier than what we were going to originally. So this can be heard. We received plenty of input from the community with their feedback. And so I just want to thank my colleagues for doing that. So I, you know, I've been working with staff, and I've been working on different ways to look at, about updating this now rather than later. So this is a, this was originally a study, a pop-up, if you will, to increase the safety for pedestrians, bicyclists through that corridor. Unintentionally, it's unfortunately made our drivers less safe in the meantime and in their behavior going through it. So for me, when we think about safety, and I'm thinking about every person going through that four-way stop. So just for the sake of conversation, I'm in favor of pulling the quick build, but implementing option one, which was presented by our, by our Kim Lee Horn originally. So just for sake of the audience here, so council was brought four options originally for us to choose from in terms of implementation. And we went with the quick build that you're currently experiencing at the Nob Hill intersection. This quick build option one was also presented. And after working with staff and exploring some ideas, I wanted to bring this to council today. So as you can see, it does bring back the lanes. But there's also some additional things that I'd like to, to suggest we add to this particular option one. So I can continue, Mayor Brown, if that's okay? Okay, so my suggestion is that we install option one. So we remove the current configuration and go to option one with certain modifications. I did check with staff on this. So I had some wild ideas of lots of things. But there's laws, and, you know, we've heard about put a push button when you cross. And there's just certain laws that we're not allowed to do those types of things. So the first one is to create a continuous bike lane all the way through the corridor for our bicyclists on both sides. This is something we're seeing all throughout the county. It's great for visibility. And also, there are these really, these smaller bollards that we can install between the lane and the bike lane. So even though it's not, they wouldn't be cement bollards because nothing we're doing today is going to be permanent. I just want to highlight that. This is stuff where we'll continue to look at, that we install these bollards that would fit between the car lane and the bike lane. So those are two modifications to option one. Additionally, we were looking at the, we were made aware that the yellow sign, the flashy part, we needed more light there, and it's not, it hasn't been working. So we are working on getting that flashy yellow light updated. Not necessarily a modification, but I wanted the community to know about that. And then we were looking at possibly for the crosswalk. So we've heard from our seniors that it's really scary and dangerous to walk across the crosswalk. And so after talking to staff, there are some options to widen the crosswalk and even, and Jessica, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, pull back the line where it says stop. So it allows more space and line of sight for the pedestrians to walk through. There's one more edit that we, and Jessica, I know I'm leaning on you a little bit when we get back to it, but that there's options to raise the sidewalk for better visibility as well for our pedestrians. So for me, my, the intent of doing this would be that we're protecting our bike lanes and our bicyclists. We're protecting our, the folks who are trying to cross the street. And we're essentially also keeping our cars safe from all those near misses that have been occurring and helping with the flow of traffic. So that's what I'm proposing today. Obviously, I'd love feedback on that. But, and then I believe that what was presented here, that in terms of when it could come back, obviously, the community knows it takes time. So I'm assuming this would just be a couple of months before we can see it actually happen. And then, which would beautifully align with the report that we're all getting for the entire Bay Avenue corridor. Because to the speaker's point, this is just one area, and I've said this many times, that we need to look at the entire corridor to really have a cohesive plan and a real idea of flow of traffic for pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars. So I'll leave it at that and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, we've heard from everybody, and it sounds like we are going to have to go back to something that was like more the original. Our plan was to make it safer. I believe we did that. But we had a lot of consequences to that that was unforeseen. So moving forward, going back to option one. As far as flashing lights, a lot of people wrote comments saying they'd like to see the flashing lights where you push the button. But apparently, we can't do that at a stop sign or a four-way stop sign like that, unfortunately. Definitely, we've heard everybody, and we're definitely going to continue to work on it. Option one would be a good idea.
I want clarification on what a continuous bike lane is.
So the way I understood the request was that usually, we do bike striping just at the intersection. So right now, it's dashed there through the intersection. And other times, you put it like immediately next to the intersection. But it is allowable for you to paint it solid green for the entire stretch of roadway.
So one of the things we don't currently have is a continuous bike lane. So this would help highlight that we actually do. But this would really highlight that, hey, cars, this is the bike lane. Stay out of it. It's green. And we can implement bollards to get our community kind of trained and aware of those changes.
Okay. I think, you know, the point of this study was to be done over a longer period of time and to hopefully maintain what we put in as a quick build, which is what it was. And it was what we could safely afford at that time. We were told that this wasn't the best option, but that it was something that we could implement quickly and affordably. So I am pleased to say that we were able to do that. And the fact was to try to make it safer. You know, the e-bike situation has become rampant. And so that was huge, I'm sure, on everybody's minds. And I'm bummed that the traffic has been impacted so much because I think that this was an effort. We were really answering the call at this point when people were calling for safety. And I think it's too soon to make any drastic changes only because we are doing a corridor study. And the Capitola Avenue Bridge is closed. Our off-ramp is closed. I think that these things aren't providing great points of our data, data that we could probably get some more of over the time that we had allotted before. I also, Jamie, had a question. I know there was talk about reaching out to the owner of Nob, the Nob Hill CVS and maybe getting some signage that is more direct, that that is where to turn in or the best place to turn in for that shopping center?
Yeah, so our community development director, there she is. I believe we did a couple of reach-outs to them. We can continue to do that because that does help. I think people did have tend to learn to turn right in there. I know initially, I think people were a little bit confused about where to turn in for the Nob Hill Center.
And we didn't put any signage on the off-ramp of saying like, hey, the right turn is right turn, right lane's right turn only, right? Or did we? Oh, we did. Okay, cool. Yeah, so I'm not prepared to, to do much change to this. I do feel like I walk that daily, and I do feel safer. Maybe we need to rethink colors or striping or whatever. That makes more sense for people all over, all across the board. And then, yeah, maybe a little bit more feedback from the Bay senior apartments and just to see how they're feeling. I mean, we have gotten responses in gratitude in the fact that people do feel safer. And I think that's important to note as well. But I hear that everybody is coming out for the same reason, that it has impacted traffic. And so, yeah, that, to me, is a huge bummer because I really was excited to hopefully help mitigate a large problem that has been an issue for a long time. But, yeah, so maybe we need to figure out how we're going to push this forward in a, in a more robust way to actually make safety a priority along with the traffic time. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, couple of questions, couple of comments. You know, it's really unfortunate that we have these compounding traffic issues with the Bay Avenue, or excuse me, the on-ramp being closed and the Capitola Bridge being closed. It really makes this kind of difficult to determine how much of these traffic issues are specifically because of the intersection and how much of the traffic issues are because of these other compounding things that are happening. Important projects taking place all at once, which is a sign of progress. But we have so much progress that it's impacting other progress. There will always be a trade-off between pedestrian safety and vehicle speed. I think we knew that when we put this in. There's, if you want safer pedestrians, you have to have slower cars. I'm not quite sure, you know, what else to do about that. And I think it's really important that we eliminated 10 conflict points, and I'm concerned with bringing those back. I'm not opposed to making some of the changes that Vice Mayor Brooks suggested. But I do, I'm really worried about those additional 10 conflict points and what it's going to mean for the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists. I have a couple more questions. So if we were, what I just heard was some talk about a continuous green bike lane potentially raising the sidewalks. What kind of cost are we looking at?
So adding more paint is a marginal cost to the overall streets budget for the city. To put in a permanent raised crosswalk would be more of a significant cost in like the tens of thousands of dollars. I believe there are some kind of temporary things where you can raise the crosswalk, but I would have to look into that more closely about costs and then potential use in other locations once they're removed. But that, I couldn't give you that information right now.
So if that was something that we wanted to move forward with tonight, it would need to be something that was addressed in the budget early next year?
Likely yes.
Even for the temporary piece, though? So the temporary use would not be as expensive, though? Is that?
It would not be as expensive. And it likely be something we can use somewhere else in the city on another quick build project.
What's the cost of that, then?
Also in the tens of thousands of dollars, but less. Maybe like 30 versus 70.
No, raised crosswalks. So that the cross, kind of like the speed tables, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, in terms of the moving, moving back the stop line in comparison to where the crosswalk is, I think that's a really good idea. And I'm wondering if we can actually move the, can you, can you pull the slide back up? So if we were to return the lane, I would like to see the lane that's closest to the curb have the stop be pushed back further than the other lanes because that's part of the pedestrian safety problem right now. Is that when everyone's lined up like this, you can't always see past the car that's closest to the, there we go. You can't always see past the car that's closest to the curb when there's a pedestrian standing there. And so someone in the middle lane will go ahead and move forward, not realizing that there's a pedestrian that just walked in front of the car that was closest to the curb. So if I were to move forward with approving going back to two lanes, I would want to see that lane closest to the curb on both sides have that stop moved back a couple feet so that there's a line of sight for all the other lanes. Is that something we're allowed to do?
So that's something we would definitely have to have Go Frederick and his team go analyze because, yes, that would alleviate some of the site distance issues for the pedestrian in that crosswalk, but perhaps would cause issues with other crosswalks and the vehicles seeing each other. So if we're proposing changing some of the geometry of the intersection, I would request that we go back and do a traffic analysis of that before approving some implementation.
And how much would that cost?
A traffic analysis of that?
Or something like that.
Less than $10,000?
Would it be safe, though, to include? We're currently analyzing the intersection at this time, and there's a budget currently with Kimlin Horn. Could that be, you know, this is part of the whole study. So maybe that's just a question to pose to them inclusive in the current contract, is what I'm thinking.
Is, could it be included in the overall corridor study?
Yeah.
Potentially.
And that's coming back in February? Okay. I think, oh, okay. So if we were to make these changes, I want to know what would, what would it actually look like in February? Because it sounds like we don't have the money for raised crosswalks. We need to go through a study to potentially move the lines back. So what are we actually doing other than just bringing the lanes back? Because my main concern here, I'm not opposed to changes. I'm opposed to going back to exactly what we had before because then we have not solved any, we're going back to the same problem we had.
So without doing a further traffic analysis, we can definitely add more paint, put in flashy signs, and have that same geometry that we had before. But if we're, again, if we're talking about moving crosswalks, widening crosswalks, that kind of thing, that would require some kind of analysis.
Okay, and so we've been, we've been collecting data that we just saw here. Would we continue collecting? If we were to direct staff to make these changes, would we continue collecting data on what we have now between now and when the changes are made?
If the direction is to make changes, I would not recommend taking any more data.
No more data. And then if we made the changes, would we collect data on the level of service and the pedestrian safety and the near miss once the changes are made?
Correct.
Okay. So that data we would have. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think, I'd like to get a little bit of feedback from the Public Works Director that if we're directing changes right here, that if we're directing changes right here, we have sufficient budget at this point to be able to move forward, and we'd be able to move forward with the feedback rather than getting a plan from traffic engineer that the council could then approve. If this could be direction, maybe to prepare that plan?
I thought we brought that up, right? I mentioned that the, after talking with staff, and I shared that it looked like the reasonable, the feasibility of even doing this wouldn't even happen until March. Is that what you're alluding to?
Yeah.
So yeah, I said that earlier, but thank you for bringing it up.
So the changes you're suggesting would potentially take place in March. In the meantime, what we have would stay there. And then come March, these changes would be made, because we're entering the wet season anyways. So, and then come March, potentially these changes would be made. And at that time in March is when the council would look at the overall corridor study and start talking about if there's going to be roundabouts or whatever is going to happen further for the long term of the corridor. Am I, my timeline right?
Yeah, that timeline sounds, that sounds good. I was concerned we were thinking, it was sounding like we might can do something in the next couple of weeks and how we were going to get there.
Okay, so in that case, the budget issue isn't as pressing because council can consider it in mid-year budget discussions anyway. Okay.
Okay. I had a question, and I am not a traffic or any, any type of expert, but I'm just, I was looking when we had the slide up, and this may sound crazy, but if, if the right-hand lane remains a right turn only, but it continues all the way to the stop sign, but it still is a right turn, but that, I don't know, would that like alleviate anything? So it's not cut off right at the back entrance of Nob Hill, but that it would flow all the way, but would only be right-hand turn? I don't know.
I mean, that could prevent the people that are always racing to try to merge.
And then keep the one lane right. That was my thought. But I don't know if that's even smart.
It's a great question. The, the bike lane that we have right now in that southbound direction is taking up the space with the protection where that right turn pocket will be. So we can continue the right turn pocket and just have through lane, but then you still have three lanes that you cross from a pedestrian perspective, and you don't have the protection for the bike lane.
Would you be able to have, you were talking about smaller bollards, right? So then would that still work with the three lanes or no?
It would have to. I mean, if you're talking about smaller bollards, it doesn't matter if that's a through lane or a turn lane. It's the same bollards, right?
Yes. So, but I'm concerned about the bollards, right? I think, and I can't recall if we have four feet or five feet on the bike lane. If you have four feet and you put the bollards up, you have five. If we put the bollards up, they're going to get hit by cars. And I know when it's hit by cyclists, it becomes a hazard for the cyclists, right? So, so we, we need to just check that in the design process if we look at something. But the bollards, we could probably put the bollards up. If we can, yes, we'll put them up. And that would provide some additional protection. But no, 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 sorry, there's something else. If you, if the bike lane, if that becomes a right turn pocket into the, into Nob Hill, we need to put the bike lane between the right turn lane and the through lane. That's
Oh, right.
That's engineering design. Yep. So yes, so we can keep it on the outside.
Got you. Okay, yeah.
Can I ask a clarification question? If, if we were, as Councilmember Morgan suggested, to do that, though, on the south side, it would be three lanes for the pedestrian. It would reduce by one lane the number of lanes the pedestrians would have to cross. So on the north side, there would remain?
It would remain three, not, or two, not, not three, on the northbound. Oh, and the south side. Yeah, yeah. On the south side, we would still have, yeah, you're right.
And the south side would drop, drop one.
If.
In front of Dairy Queen?
Dairy Queen side.
Dairy Queen side, yeah.
That we would make that a turn, that that would be a turn-only lane? Is that what you're talking about? Or just getting rid of it altogether?
Councilmember Morgan's suggestion was to have the right only
Yes.
Into the Nob Hill Center and not through to avoid the race up the hill. And so that would mean if you were crossing on the south side, the Dairy Queen side between DQ and Nob Hill, it would be one less lane to cross.
I see. It'd be better for pedestrians on the south side, but worse for bicyclists on the north side.
Sounds right.
All right. Well, continued discussion. Yeah.
Okay, I just want to highlight a couple of things that were set on the dais that I don't agree with. I heard that there wasn't decrease in vehicle safety, and frankly, we don't know that. In fact, the signs and the presentation that we received suggests that there is an increase in vehicle safety, bringing the total conflict points from 41 to 31. That was part of the purpose of these safety improvements for vehicles as well as bicycles and pedestrians. And also, I heard a lot of emphasis on anecdotal comments from the public who are upset that there's traffic. There's a lot of improvements happening in that area that are contributing to this traffic. We knew when we went into this, when we spent a considerable amount of time and money, and we were both on a committee, Councilmember Clark, and we made these educated decisions based on the advice and recommendations and discussions from information from traffic engineers. And I don't think it's right to spend all this time and all this money on this project and then pull the plug because we hear complaints from residents who are facing an increase in traffic when this was the whole, we already knew this going into this, that there was going to be an increase in traffic, which isn't drastically different from what we knew was going to happen when we made these decisions in the first place. So now we're talking, I want to ask staff, how much have we spent on these studies and the quick build at this point?
The construction cost for a quick build was approximately $50,000. The study, I want to say, was 20, so far.
Those $70,000. And to reduce it back to two lanes, approximately, how many, tens of thousands of dollars?
Around the same order of magnitude, because you have to basically resurface the streets, because you, we ground out the thermoplastic and paint, you can't really ground out. So you have to do a layer over it.
So it'd be wasting over $100,000 of city funds by pulling the plug on this early before we know the results of the study. And I think that's irresponsible. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that since you mentioned me, my name.
Go to.
Yeah, our plan was to make it safer. We achieved that, but we created some other problems. So now we're looking at it like, okay, let's try to solve the other problem. It's not a waste of money or a waste of time, because we're still going to go with option one, which is better than what we originally had. It still addresses a lot of the safety concerns. So I don't think it's a waste of time. And I think that we've heard from all the people in the public that they're perceived that it is more dangerous driving the car in the intersection, whether it's actually true or not, but that's, that's the perception everybody has. So I think we owe it to them, especially how much we've heard from everybody, that we still move and try to be something instead of, you know, not being flexible and pivoting and moving to a different direction. I still like option one with some of the changes.
Yeah, I'll just echo what Councilmember Clark is saying. We are using data and the information from Kim Lee Horn. The option one came directly from our consultants. And so in this, in this situation, I'm feeling like we, out of the four, did not pick the right one. And option one is still, is something that we can try. To the point of money, I believe that in March is when we do the grinding. And what's the technical term, Jessica?
Resurface?
Resurfacing. We have the folks come out in March anyways. And so that could help offset those costs that we would be doing, or we would be incurring. Is that accurate?
So we have our annual pavement management program, which you may recall, we pushed back from the falls to not pave while it's raining. And so we have the opportunity to make changes to this intersection with that same mobilization.
Right. So that wouldn't incur as much as Councilmember Peterson was alluding to. Is that correct?
It would be significantly less. I wouldn't say like half is less, but it would be less because we had already had someone who does that kind of work under a contract in, in the city.
Yeah. And, and my last just comment before I make the motion is that, you know, sometimes we need a pivot. Sometimes we try things and it doesn't work, and we need to evolve and pivot and try things. I'm happy that the consultant brought this as an option forward, and I'm going to lean on the consultant for their expertise in this and believe that the information he brought to us that also showed reductions in conflicts at the intersection, because that was what was presented several months ago. So I'm prepared to make a motion, Mayor Brown, that we remove the current config, in March, we remove the current configuration and install option one with modifications to the, and within reason, because we have our consultant here. I'll add that caveat, that we extend the striping for the green bike lane. We look at costs for raised, just the cost, we're not going to install them for the raised temporary sidewalks, that we are going to look, oh, crosswalks, sorry, crosswalks, that we are going to expand the walk, crosswalk as well.
Well, so was the crosswalk part of option one?
How wide it is?
Oh, wide.
How wide it is, yeah, height. Right. So, no, that's correct, what you just said. So no, that's in addition to option one. And the widening of the crosswalk. And then I'll lean on our consultant to see if we can move back the stop, stop line from, stop sign line. It's like a tongue twister. And I think I touched on any of them. If I'm missing one, please let me know. And the bollards.
Determining if we can use the bollards?
Yeah. Ideally, keep them at every corner of the intersection, because that's feasible, but also the extent of as far as much, as far as we can use them. So that is my motion. And I think I covered everything.
Vice Mayor, may I read the motion back for?
Yes.
For posterity?
Sorry, I was going to ask some questions that might lead to modifications to the motion. Do you want to read it now, or do you want to wait until?
I can wait.
Okay. Do we need a second before we continue discussion?
Are you proposing to amend the motion?
Potentially.
You can amend the motion. We don't need to.
Where there's a second.
Sure.
Okay. I, what I would ask to be added to this motion would be that we do continue to collect data between now and March, so that when, or if changes are made in March, and once we look at the overall corridor study, we have two iterations of data that we can look at in case it's determined that this actually is the best option and we need to go back. I think that's an important aspect that we, that we do continue to collect, or excuse me, that we do collect data on the new changes that will be made in, in March. And then, I won't be here, but what I would ask is that there's a lot of unknowns in this motion. We don't know if we can move the sidewalks or the things back. We don't know if we can add the length. So my request would be to add to the motion, to bring this back in January, to find out what within the motion is actually feasible to be changed in March. So today would be the direction to move forward with planning for these changes, and that it would come back to the council in January to determine if those changes are actually feasible, or if we're essentially just going back to what we had before with green bike lanes. Is that acceptable to the maker of the motion?
Yeah, I almost, I would just comment that when they bring it back, they should just bring it back with the whole corridor report. So whenever that happens, because that would just.
That's in March?
She said January, February. Late January, early February.
Late January? Okay, then that's fine.
Yeah, that's at that meeting.
I just don't want, I, yeah, I'm just worried about the unknowns.
I agree.
Generally, right? Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
I concur with all that. Now, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify, my position is not that I'm confident that we shouldn't make the proposed changes, is that I believe it's premature and that we need more data before we make this decision. And I just also had one more concept about if there's any way we could add signage closer to the freeway to let people know that the right lane is turn-only, if that would help the situation. Because I do agree, if you're not a, yeah, in the meantime, or yeah, if you're not a local, then it can be kind of confusing.
And are there any arrows? There's an arrow painted?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm just wondering, I, just because I'm kind of stuck on almost like that midline option of having two lanes on one side, one of which is a right turn only, and then only having one to eliminate like the NASCAR feeling once you get across the intersection. I don't know if that needs to be in the motion, or if it's something we can think about in the back of our brains for the professionals here. But I think it's something worth looking into or trying to see how that might, oh, I'm looking at the video, how that might help or not. So I don't know if that's.
Councilmember Morgan, I think that's a great request for staff to bring back at that January-ish, whenever it is, meeting, to just have that conversation, because again, that could impact the whole corridor.
Right.
I have a, just point of clarification. It sounds like we are requesting that the current situation be studied until January, as well as the corridor study is coming back around January. And construction of this new proposal won't happen until March. So I guess I'm just wondering, like, what's the point of making this decision right now when we are going to get the data before we start construction anyways?
You're spot on. And why I brought this back for council deliberation now is because we've had so much, so many community members asking for us to have this conversation. And I want to acknowledge that they're being heard, and that we are looking at these changes where we want to have this conversation. We want to continue, you know, with the dialogue. So it's really, you're spot on. And the why of doing it right now is because I want the community to know that we're taking action, which is really important in response to all of the requests and the emails and the feedback that we've gotten over the last several months. So that's why I made the motion.
Before, there's a vote, I just want to clarify. So Mayor Brown did amend the motion. Do you accept the amendments?
Do.
And then just for the record, to read it back before we vote. So the motion is to remove the current quick build project configuration in, or I'm sorry, yes, remove the current quick build project configuration in March and install option one with modifications to extend the striping for continuous bike lane, examine costs for raised crosswalks, expand the crosswalk and to work with Kim Lee Horn to remove the stop sign line and determine if bollards can be kept at every corner of the intersection. The motion was amended to include continuous data collection between now and March with the current quick build project configuration, so as to allow a data comparison between the current project configuration and future proposed configuration, and to return this item to the city council in January for further consideration and determine if the new configuration is able to be implemented in conjunction with the overall corridor study.
I said all those words, except the one about the line, the stop line. It's not removing it, it's moving it back.
Moving it back. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. With that, we have a motion and amendment and an acceptance of the amendment.
Okay.
All right. Based on the discussion on the dais, I would ask a little. Great. Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
No.
Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
And Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries four to one. I appreciate the robust conversation on this. I think it's a good sign of, you know, council working to find a compromise on these kinds of issues. I appreciate the member, members of the public that shared their opinion, and especially those that even with frustration with the project, acknowledge that council is well-intentioned in their efforts to try to improve safety and well-being. I really appreciate that, as I believe my colleagues do as well. Okay, with that, before we move on to item 8B about junior guard registration, I would like to go back to our presentations. I see that we have Chief Dally here with us now. Welcome. And I would like to now begin item 3B, a presentation, proclamation in honor of Police Chief Andrew Dally's retirement. And I'll turn it over to the city manager for any comments to get us started.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. I'll just take a minute here before we get going. I just want to acknowledge Chief Andrew Dally for everything he has done for the City of Capitola. You've had 24 years here. It's been a great run. You've had every job a sworn police officer can have within the City of Capitola. I want to say you should be very proud of your accomplishments and your achievements. I'm very proud of you. I'm also very humbled to have had the opportunity to work with you, learn with you, grow professionally with you. So I want to thank you for everything you've done for the city. So thank you.
So I would like to now share some information from this proclamation. Police Chief Andy Dally has dedicated over 24 years of exemplary service to the Capitola Police Department. He came to the Capitola Police Department from Butte County, trading the wide-open rural beat for a dark blue uniform, 2.2 square miles of city, and epic surf. Chief Dally was promoted to captain in 2018, showcasing his leadership skills and commitment to fostering a positive department culture. In November 2021, Chief Dally was appointed chief of police, where he has continued to exemplify the values of service, respect, and excellence in law enforcement. Beyond his professional achievements, Chief Dally is an avid surfer who passionately supports and teaches new surfers, sharing his love for the ocean and the sport. Chief Dally and his wife are devoted advocates for rehoming abandoned dogs, showing their compassion and commitment to animal welfare. Chief Dally has played an instrumental role in establishing Skateola, a Capitola Police Department youth outreach skateboard contest at McGregor Skate Park, beginning in 2021. Chief Dally's dedication to his professional role and his active engagement in the community have made a significant positive impact on the lives of many residents in the City of Capitola. I would like to now bring you this proclamation, as well as a gift from the city, art from three Skateola events signed by the artist, Taylor Reinhold. And with that, can we have a round of applause for Chief Dally? Thank you. welcome. I would, thank you so much for joining. I would, thank you so much for joining us. I believe that there may be something that you would like to present to our chief as well.
Just a couple of applause. First of all, thank you, council, for allowing me to live my life and my death to be part of the celebration. And kind of going back a few years, I have to understand, Andy started his career up in California, and he started by feeling the helicopter, the age of 19. And then his career has taken on so many different sides. But you certainly found the love here in Capitola. So thank you for supporting. I'm just very excited about this environment. This is evident in the inflection we have in the city of Capitola. And to the line, thank you so much.
Want to get one with your dad holding up for it? Chief Dally, would you like to say a few words?
Well, wow, I'll try and hold it together. But thank you so much to Jamie, council, city staff, all the police department, and the community. It's just been, like I said, it's about 25 years, not to count, but I remember, because I came October 99, so it was the year 2000 when everyone thought the whole internet would shut down. I remember sitting up there and it never happened. But anyways, yeah, 29 and a half years, it's been a, it's been a long time. It's over, over half my life just being in law enforcement. So closing this chapter, starting a new one, I'm just really looking forward to it and really appreciate, like I said, the time I've been here in the 25 years with the city. Like I said, over half, half my life here in Capitola. So appreciate it. Really proud of Capitola PD. It's been a great home. They have really good employees. My wife's always been there for me. My family's supported me. Like I said, I'm gonna really enjoy this Thanksgiving and Christmas. So appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, don't leave yet. We have some council comments, and then I'll open it for public comment as well. Council comments.
I'll say a couple of words. I just want to say how lucky we are to have had a person of your professionalism and kindness and quality lead our police department for so long. I remember when I first started on council, I had a meeting with you and I was just, it just left a really great impression on me about the character of this city, and I just couldn't be more proud of our police department and just a huge thank you for all of your service. Thank you.
So, Chief, for nearly three decades, you have guided the Capitola Police Department, ensuring safety, fostering trust, and showing deep care for every individual in our city. I thought I had the dates right, so if I age you a little bit more, I'm sorry. So from starting with the department in 95 to becoming chief in 21, your dedication has been unwavering, and your leadership truly divides the spirit of service. Andy, you've always approached every situation with openness and genuine, a genuine desire to connect with others. You fostered meaningful dialogue with our residents, with me, built strong relationships, and mentored countless officers while keeping our community safe. I will always remember how kind you were to welcome my daughter and her pal to a tour in your office. That's just one example of your approachability and your generosity of spirit. And flipping burgers at every national night out, I never ate them because they're always a little burnt. And of course, your love for Capitola and the incredible waves we're lucky to have. And who can forget the infamous Hawaiian shirts? And everyone's seen those photos. As you retire, please know that your legacy of service, compassion, and leadership will continue to inspire all of us. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to making Capitola safe, welcoming the community it is today. I am deeply, deeply grateful for all that you have done. I wish you the best in the next chapter. You've truly earned it, and I will call you about that bridge. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm so proud of you, and I've seen you grow on our force. I mean, I feel like I've known you forever, and you have always just had that approachability and accessibility. And I think that's really shown into our PD that we have now, and we've created, you've helped create just such a good dynamic between staff and community and city council. And you've been around for all the fun stuff and some of the bad stuff, you know, like 2023, that was really gnarly, and you, you were there for me as, as the mayor and for our community. And so all those, all those big ticket items will always stick out in my mind, and I'm excited for your next step and just really happy for you. So thank you.
Well, Andy, I think I met you like 24 years ago, and you were surfing at the Point, and I was talking with another officer from Capitola, and he goes, yeah, Andy's a new hire at Capitola. And I'm like, well, he's not even actually that bad of a surfer, being from Chico. And, and how many times I tried to get you to come over to lateral to the sheriff's office? I must have asked you 10 times to come work with us, and you never did, and I'm super glad you didn't. So cheers to you, and can't wait to see you out there surfing soon again.
Chief, I'll just echo everything that's already been said. Thank you so much for your service to our city, to our community. You have always been open to answer my questions, to help me work through concerns. Every time I see you in the community, you have a smile on your face, you're approachable. We are so grateful to have had you here in the city of Capitola, and your time leading the department has been so meaningful. Just thank you so much for your service. You will be missed here, but I'm sure a lot of our fellow surfers will see you in the water and don't think that we won't continue to contact you with our questions. So thank you again.
Absolutely. I appreciate all, and I will say that I am not leaving you in bad hands. So you have, Sarah's gonna be a fantastic chief, and like I said, you have a really great police department. So like I said, I definitely left it better than I received it, for sure. So thank you.
I would like to open up public comment on this item for anyone who would like to make
I'll make it brief. You guys know I like to talk. Andy, thank you for the last 20 years. He knows I'm a crier, unapologetically. We've been through a lot together. He, you've been an excellent courier of the position of chief. You've been our first internal chief, which also paved the way for me. And, and you've been an advocate for me throughout my career, as well as one of my first field training officers. So thank you. I look forward to seeing you out there. We're gonna give you parking tickets. But it's really been an honor, and you've, the way that you've been full of humility and shoved me forward has been truly a blessing, and I look forward to continuing your legacy and, again, paying it forward and leaving it better than I found it as well. So thank you.
When I joined 13 and a half years ago, you were just on a patrol. It was such a delight to be with you as a sergeant, to move with you as a captain, and then to have you as a chief. You've really changed my life. I appreciate your support, the things that you have done for chaplaincy, and as a person I love and adore you, and your bride. And I'm so thankful and grateful for you, Andy. You did a good job. You did a really good job. And thank you that now you passing this to Sarah, we have a department that gets to work within as a whole, and the whole training and group of people that work there are so well-trained and wheeled and smooth. The communication is good, and I only see us as moving forward, and you were a big footprint in that. So thank you, Andy. Bless you.
Yeah, and it will be a few words. Chief Dally, first I want to thank you. You were one of the first people that really encouraged me to apply when I came out to just kind of do a visit with Cliff, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the faith and the mentoring that you've had of me throughout my career. Because of you, I'm in the position that I'm in now, and I appreciate that. You've been a great mentor. You've served me very well. I hope I've done the same for you. Now, Andy, I've had a small taste of what you're about to experience, leaving the department and having some freedom, not having an alarm clock to worry about anymore, meetings, et cetera, et cetera. Congratulations, you've earned it 100%. You're gonna enjoy it, and I just hope that you just really take it in and, and know that you've done what you've needed to do here, and you deserve every, every bit of happiness that's to follow. Thank you.
I just want to say, you've been a part of my life since I moved here as a young, young child, and through that, you've gave me a lot of perspective on what it is to support a community and be that grassroots person, being that person that talks to you. Because I don't know if you remember every interaction, good, bad, or otherwise, I've had growing up here, but the comfort that you've given me, growing up here and learning, as well as an administrator, as well as just seeing what's around us, it's something that I can't be more grateful for, and I don't know how else to express. So I just want to thank you.
Any further comment on this item? Are you sure? Okay. All right. Thank you again, Chief Dally. We're gonna take a quick two, three-minute break, and we will return momentarily for our final item about junior guard registration. All right. We are going to reconvene our meeting, and we are moving now to item 8B, junior guard registration. And I will turn it over to Nikki.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, council members. We'll get the slides queued up. But so the, the item here before you is junior guard registration. All right, next slide. All right, so the staff recommendation is to maintain the junior guard registration process. Next slide, please. All right, so we're gonna do a deep history dive. You ready? All right, so, starting in about 2006, Capitola Recreation began a priority registration, and the priority was given to returning guards. At that time, the registration was done in person. It was handing in paper applications and coming to the community center. Many of you probably remember long lines related to that. Starting in this, in 2016, Capitola Recreation took on the first online registration and continued the history of providing priority registration to returning guards first, and then a few days later, opened registration for new guards. What's really important to note is that online registrations, there is a bottleneck issue with no matter what system you'd go with, you will always have a bottleneck issue when you have about 1,000 people logging on to the exact same portal at the exact same time. So probably because of this very serious bottleneck issue, in 2017, the city offered a new three-tier registration, where it prioritized returning residents first, and then a day later, it did returning non-residents, and then a day later, it did new residents, and then a day later, it did open registration to anybody else. To note that from a system management side, so the our side, the staff side, open registration is just that there are no restrictions that are put on the system. It's just now everybody can go. Any, any of the other prior tiers, is there something that is controlling within the system, preventing anybody else, you just have to hit that certain criteria. So in 2022, Recreation started to look at other online registration systems, because the one that we were working with was failing us in several different points. And part of that process, we switched to our current platform, Civic Rec. It provided us a whole lot of features that we really needed, that our former registration system was not able to provide. However, what it did not do was it did not support a three-tier registration system. And so at that point, we took a step back and began providing less tiers for the registration process. Moving forward, the department has been looking at our age distribution, and we're gonna be modifying that. But there are other agencies in our county that does different formulas. The city of Santa Cruz does have that three tiers. They've done, they, they have it a little different than what we have ever done, and state parks offers on a first-come, first-served basis. All right, so due to community feedback, we are interested in improving the registration process, and an evaluation of what priority registration should be, as well as the age distributions amongst the sessions, is something that we are going to implement and then here to talk with council about what would be a recommended option for our tier system. So the recommended option right now is maintaining the current two-tier system. It is something that we have historically maintained with providing priority to returning guards first, and then opening it up to new guards. Our system, we can handle this, we already know that we are able to do this. It aligns with the goals of the skill, skill progression for the program. Really important to note is that if we maintain our current priority, that there will be no delay to the catalog production. We will be sending out the final proof for our catalog tomorrow in order to make our mailing deadlines. We were, we pushed it as far as we could to this meeting in order to make those mailing deadlines. And sticking with this option is least disruptive to the participants who have been enrolled in the program and have had the experience of being able to register as returning guards. Next slide, please. All right, now switching to option two, which is still a really good option, as administratively, from our side, this one's pretty simple. Our registration system is designed to just roll with resident or non-resident as part of the filters. 60% of the program's residents are, sorry, 50% of the program are residents. The majority of our non-residents are from Live Oak and Aptos, and there's obviously a handful of outliers in that. Moving with this option would limit access to long-term non-resident participants, and there could be a potential of if older age divisions are entering the program outside of the progression- of the progression, starting at a young age and moving up, that they might be removed due to safety. This is something that happens without the program. A lot of times, it happens at younger ages if they're not quite ready, and we always invite them back. But making sure that individuals are able to perform at the level that is what their age division is performing is an important part of that. And then, finally, just as a reminder, for Recreation, we operate outside of the city boundaries. We actually use the so-called Union Elementary School District boundaries as our residency designation, so that anybody that puts in an address in our program, it's within the school district boundaries. All right. Now, Option 3, which is considering a three-tier option. And it's any variation of a three-tier option, whether it's returning or whether it's resident and doing some kind of combination of that. So, our current registration system does not have really simple filters in order to make three tiers possible. It is something that we could attempt to do, but there's a lot of caution in manually creating filters within the registration system. It would require some overtime on the staff part, but more importantly, anytime that we are manually creating a filter within the registration system, which means that we are trying to work around the filters that are already existing in the registration system, we have a very high likelihood of errors or confusion for participants as they go to register on that very high-stress day. There is no perfect registration system. As I had mentioned earlier, we are currently with the registration system that we are because our former registration was failing us in a number of ways. You may choose a registration system that will work for you in this way by providing tiers, but you could be compromising any other number of factors. And then, also, just to note, as far as registration systems, it is in our best interest to stay with our current registration system. It is a reasonable thing for us to review registration systems from time to time, about every four or five years, make sure that the product that we're providing is current. But it is a process that takes a good nine months in order to execute and order to do it well. If we were to rush it, it would be the participants that would ultimately suffer as a result of that, because we wouldn't be ready to open a registration with a new system, not having learned it and tested it. Next slide, please. All right. So, just a quick little how registration works 101. So, if you can imagine yourself opening up an online form, that's probably several pages, and you need to fill in your name, and you need to fill in your birth date and all of that. So, every single activity selection, which means that A, an activity selection is a particular age division, so let's say C's, that is within one session, and it is AM. And you fill out that activity, you fill out that online form, hit all the criteria, have the dates, have the session times, and then, you do that 29 more times. So, that's kind of the first step in order to set up how registration works within a system. And they all kind of work like this. The expectation is that staff are building each activity block and making sure that all the little checkboxes are checked and details are filled in there. Once that's completed, we would incorporate the priority steps. And so, what has happened in the past is that staff takes all of the registrations for our last summer and enrolls them in a certain session that we then call returning guards, and then add a prerequisite to all 29 of those activity selections. That then sets the time, and then, we also set a time for the open registration. And then, the important part is, is that that's something that we have added to every single one of those online forms, all 29 of them. So, in order to make the prerequisite go away, said staff on the next moment of registration is going through and removing all of those prerequisites. So, there's a lot of actions that are happening behind the scenes when it comes to registration. There isn't just a, like, start time and it automatically goes. Yeah. Next slide, please. All right. So, this is a general list of issues that occur within any registration systems. In my 20 years of my career, I have worked with about five registration systems, and that's where I generated this list, is everything that I have personally experienced that kind of can go wrong. Sometimes, it's as simple as filters just override each other, and we weren't able to predict that. Sometimes, it's incomplete registrations, payment being accepted without the actual registration happening. But more often than not, what really happens is that there's a lot of participant confusion. It's a very high-stress time in order to register. And when these issues occur, it is something that becomes a big problem for staff to solve in a very quick turnaround, because everybody's waiting. And I bring this up because the more that you manually create filters or restrictions, prerequisites, the more likely some of these issues are to occur. Next slide, please. All right. So, Option 1 and Option 2 is almost no fiscal impact, other than a potential enrollment loss. We do have a very large waitlist. I feel confident that while we might lose some people, we'll probably find new people to fill those spaces. Option 3 would incur additional costs due to overtime, and it is overtime that staff is calculated here. The really important piece to this, though, is that there, a lot of times, are unknowns that we can go through and test, how all those prerequisites or how those filters might work, but they still don't perform in the way that we expected to. And so, we do a lot of problem solving. Every year, we're doing a lot of problem solving, and that is not quantifiable, because we don't know what might happen. Next slide, please. All right. So, again, the recommended action is to maintain the current junior guard registration. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Thanks, Nikki, for bringing this to us. How many non-residents, or let's start with residents. How many residents that are trying to get in don't get in? Do we have a number on that?
No, that's a hard number to actually pull out as to like what the waitlists are. But waitlists do move. And we have, it's every year, when we go through, we register individuals from the waitlist and have moved through significant numbers. And so, we do get a lot of those individuals in. When individuals register for sessions, that there is a greater capacity, there's a significant higher success rate that they are going to move from the waitlist into the actual program. And that's a big reason why we're considering a lot of the age redistribution.
Can you tell me the first average, more non-residents versus residents on the waiting list, or is it equal, or?
There are definitely more non-residents on the waiting list than there are residents.
Can you clarify? Are we on, right now, the way that our two tiers are working? Is, are the returning guards being granted like a day early to sign up?
You are correct, yes. So, usually, it's like a first day open, and returning guards are given that priority. And then, I believe last year that we even did it a few hours apart. So, starting at 8:30 AM was returning guards, and then, noon was new guards, I believe. If not, it's the next day.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
Yeah. I'm just not sure if I understand the process for if somebody isn't admitted because the program has reached capacity. Do they have any sort of priority or guarantee to be admitted into the next season? Or do they just have to reapply like everybody else?
Yes. So, they do have to reapply, just like everybody else. If an individual were to register and be placed on the waitlist, that waitlist is set by timestamp. And so, we are pulling individuals off the waitlist based on the timestamp that they have within the registration system. And when a space opens up, we will contact that very first individual. And in sessions that there's a larger capacity, so our afternoon sessions for C's, there's a very large number of them, there's a significantly higher, can be a higher turnover in order to get them placed into the program. And we do end up with getting through the waitlist and having individuals that they pass on their opportunity, because they have gotten into something else, or they have found somewhere else to go. And that's a significant reason why waitlists do move, is because they're on our waitlist, but they might have found another solution. And so, then, they pass on their opportunity, and it goes to the next person.
Thank you.
So, Nikki, you said that tomorrow, the brochure is going out. And so, in response to the public, you know, the emails we got, that's not going to resolve their concerns. Is there an option to put on the website now? Like, oh, I'm speaking out loud, and it's not, it won't work. Because I was thinking that we could say something to the fact of Capitola Residence registration is whatever it is, April 29th at 9:00 AM. But just put it on our website. I'm just trying to think if there's some sort of middle ground here to deal with this year's registration. I'm trying to think out of the box, outside of the box here.
So, if council does decide to not go with staff recommendation, we are prepared in order to make a quick change.
Printing tomorrow.
We are proofing right now. So, we are prepared in order, but it will be a change. It's the difference of maybe Friday versus Monday in order to, but the more detail we need to change, the longer the delay is.
When do the brochures actually get mailed out, the catalogs?
Yeah. I'm going to, so I have Corey McNair in chambers here. He is the Community Services and Recreation Coordinator that develops the catalog that gets mailed out and has a lot of expertise in our registration system. So, if you would please.
Thank you. So, right now, and we're working with a new printer, and they are working with us on these deadlines. If we get the catalog final proofing tomorrow, they said we can still get mail out by December 3rd, December 2nd or 3rd. Any later than that, the Thanksgiving holiday is already putting delays on that. And then, with Christmas mailing, if we go out any later, with general mailing and not first-class, it could be after Christmas if we don't make it.
And if I can just note that we are talking a lot about junior guard right now, but the delay of the catalog would be experienced through our classes program and other things that are operating.
Thank you. And then, what, when does registration open?
Registration would, 8:30 AM on March 11th, Tuesday.
Okay. So, it could be the difference of getting your catalog in December for registration in March, or getting your catalog in January for registration in March?
Oh, right now, the wording is a placeholder text, because the entire catalog is already at the printers with knowledge that they may have to restrike a plate. Currently, just says registration opens March 11th, and no details about priority registration or residency or anything. We are hoping to be able to put that in first thing in the morning.
Couldn't we print it, even if we make changes today, couldn't we just print it as-is, that just says registration opens in March, and then, they'd find out about all the priority settings and whatnot when they get to the website?
I think what staff is saying is if we get directions tonight, we can make the change, and we can print on schedule.
Okay.
That, yes, yes. And that's our hope.
No delay. Okay. Good, 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 good. Okay. Okay. I think the rest of what I have is comments, so I will save it. Thank you. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay. All right. We will open public comment on this item. Now is the time to address the council. If you would like to make comments, you'll have three minutes to speak. Feel free to state your name if you'd like it included in the record. Welcome back.
Thank you for having me, and thank you for having us on an agenda. First off, just want to thank the Recreation Department. I've been on the Junior Guard Parent Club Board for the last 10 years, and it's just been a pleasure with Nikki and Corey and the rest of the crew up at Jade Street. They really are accommodating. And the fact that we got our charter, and we have beach services back on the beach, so a lot of great things are happening, so I want to acknowledge that. But I do want to say that if Brennan moved here as a seven-year-old, he might not get in the program. And Chief Dally's retirement queued this whole thing up beautifully. Like, we serve our people. And, you know, it's served us to promote Chief Dally. It's served us to promote Sarah. And I just can't believe that we don't want to prioritize our residents in the school district boundaries. I did junior guards as a kid. My mom worked upstairs, and when the session was over, my brother and I raced up those stairs to tell my mom about the day. That was her lunch break. We got to connect. It was summer. I mean, I don't know what my mom would have done for childcare in the summer or having programs for my brother and I if junior guards wasn't here. I literally shake registering for junior guards. When I had three kids going into guards at the same time to try to get them in the same session at the same time, I was shaking. And guess what? It's 8:30. I've taken time off from work. And it's 8:45. It's still not live. It's 8:50. It's 9:15. I'm telling my boss, I'm sorry, I now need to take the morning off. Not their fault. Glitches. Life happens, right? But what my summer was is a walking school bus with kids from my neighborhood, parents coordinating, making it all happen. Live Oak and Aptos have Rio Del Mar, they have Manresa, and they have Twin Lakes. So, we have to serve our youth. We have to. And our working parents. We fail our working parents in this district if we do not let them have priority registration for junior guards. We make them go find something else outside of the city. And that is cruel. It is cruel that you do that to working parents. So, I get it. It's tough. It's complicated. But I have faith in the City of Capitola. I have faith in your leadership, and I also have faith in the scrappy, you know, ability. I mean, they deal with some wacky parents. I'm just going to call a spade a spade. And there are some wonderful parents outside of the district that have contributed so much to the junior guard program. So, I don't want to penalize them, but the reality is the kids are in the older ages. They're going to have a better shot of getting in. That seven-year-old that just moved to town, that's not a returning guard. Coin flip.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Brown and council members. Thank you for your time and for exploring workable options that I hope can support the needs of our community. My name is Christine McBroom. My family and I have lived and worked in Capitola for 15 years, serving the residents of Capitola. We actively participate in the community activities, especially those serving children. We have two young boys, age eight and nine. I've taught my kids to invest in their community, and they volunteer in multiple capacities. I spoke to our city staff and presented the situation to you all back in the summer, when our boys unfortunately did not get into our local junior guards program. And we were pleasantly persistent. Lots of phone calls, we were on the waitlist, being online, went exactly when registration opened, as well as visiting the rec office in person multiple times. I'm frustrated that over these past six months, no one from our staff has reached out to me or any other parent in Capitola, not even the Junior Guards Parent Club. All these resources would have provided you all with a wealth of knowledge around the user experience during registration that could have helped you brainstorm ideas to find a workable strategy to meet the residents' needs of Capitola. find a workable strategy to meet the residents' needs of Capitola. It would have been helpful to gather the input, to, to find workable ways for this, for all families to get into this fabulous program. There's been no community input thus far, as far as I know. I found it interesting to learn from the staff report that Santa Cruz Junior Guards has a four to three-tiered system and they prioritize their residents. Why doesn't Capitola think that's important? When reviewing the options presented to you by staff, I ask that you consider and keep in mind, how do these options serve the needs of our residents? Option three is your best option to implement for the 2025 season. This option drives your mission statement, which is on your website and mentions residents and community multiple times. This past election season, our community voted for an increase in our sales tax here in Capitola. We were told these funds were used for several things, but most specifically for our Recreation Department. Why would the first action you take after passing this measure exclude serving the needs of our resident youth here in Capitola? If the additional cost is truly just $4,000 to sort applications, then I, as a resident who supported that measure, am here to say, I want our tax dollars to serve the people of Capitola. Our youth, our future, they're all worth it. We, the residents, are worth it. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Counsel, thank you. First, I want to say I'm proud to be one of those original junior guards from the 1980 first class that went through the whole program, graduated from it, awesome program. It's changed a lot of lives, including myself, taught us respect, all that stuff. I can't say anything more than what these two have just presented to you, except in our last presentation, you guys did bring up that when something's broken, you need to pivot. Something's broken and I believe you need to pivot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. I really don't have an issue with your registration system. I don't, it doesn't matter to me how you do that, but I do have concerns about our Capitola residents being first to hear that Christine and her kids couldn't get in is problematic, but we have. I don't even know how we term residents being the school district. Tell me where we do that, anywhere else in our city code, I'd like to see that. I know this, I know that the residents that actually live in the city of Capitola pay staff, pay salaries, they pay for facilities, and they, they should have first opportunities to be regardless, they should have first opportunity to be in this program. And the safety issue actually gets compounded if that person gets rejected. We'll use Christine's kids, they get rejected and now they're going to go in a year later and they don't get that safety training, it's going to be more problematic for them to get into the system. So, Councilmember Brooks, I appreciate you acknowledging the base rate thing, saying, hey, we tried, we failed, maybe we need to look at a new way. This is another opportunity. Don't do it because it's easy, the book's already coming out, it's a registration system we already know. Put Capitola kids first and then go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. Any questions or comments? I know I have a couple questions and a couple comments. Go ahead.
I have a comment about the two-tier. We should just make it residents and non-residents, and that can be your two-tier, if we have to keep it that way. Or the third one where we do returning residents, residents, returning non-residents. That's my input.
So I think, because, you know, I run the Warf to Warf and I register for that and it can still bring on those like little pitter-patters of stress if you're having just this very small, specific window. I'd really like to see at least a day, maybe even two or three designated for resident-only children. And then after that, you could open up whatever else is available for non-residents, just so that there isn't so much crunch time for the parents that are really trying to better their kids' lives. And yeah, I agree with the, the age thing. It doesn't really make any sense that a kid would be overlooked for not having the skills that they weren't granted because they couldn't get into the program. So that doesn't bode well for me at all. So if that means keeping the two-tier aspect because that's more helpful and more streamlined, then I would really recommend doing different days of registration. And yeah, that's all I think. Thank you.
Comments?
I'd just like to second that comment. I do, I have also applied to, you know, very short, time-bound events or, how to say it, but it can cause a lot of stress. I don't think there's any reason why somebody should be taking time off work to, you know, try to sign up for this in an hour period. It should be open for a day or so. And if we need to turn that into a lottery system after the fact, then I think that would be appropriate. But yeah, there's, there's no point causing people all the stress and of having this really short time period to sign up.
Well, I live this reality, so I'm very familiar with it. Nikki, I know you made comments about the waitlist and I just want to acknowledge that I know we have a waitlist and I know it's on time slots, but when you're a working parent or trying to figure out childcare and figure out summer, waiting several weeks for, for that is really stressful and you're probably looking for something else at that point. So I just want to make sure that the community hears that because I want our, my colleagues here to understand that it's just, it's just a stressful time, especially over summer. I, I think having the multiple-tiered system makes sense down the road. I don't think it's possible from what I'm hearing right now that, but we can do a two-tiered system with residents and non-residents. And I'm grateful that the SoCal School District students are included in that. I heard that from feedback, from emails that were received, that that, that, that was, that was agreeable. So, other than that, the two tiers, and, and I do have a second follow-up question about the funds. We have a dedicated children's fund and so I think it'd be great for staff to look into utilizing the dedicated children's fund to offset that $4,000 or whatever it was, to really get to the system that's going to work and that frees up staff time or what, you know, whatever you need to have that amazing, state-of-the-art system. That's why we have a dedicated children's fund and I think we should utilize the dollars for that. Those are just my comments for now.
All right, thank you. So a couple of comments. I agree that the, for this coming year, the resident and non-resident two-tier would be appropriate and set aside, setting aside the funding for a new system come 2026, because you mentioned that we look at that every two or three or four years anyway, so I think that that would be a good thing to consider for next year. I am also glad that the school district is included. I think we also do that for our youth swim program and our mayor-for-a-day program. There's several programs where school district is kind of what's considered residency and I think that continues to be important. I agree also that, that having days between the tiers rather than hours is probably a better fit there. I am not okay with rules or changes about how long someone has been a resident. I don't think that that should come into play. I think it's either resident or non-resident. If you just moved here, you're a resident, you, you are now a Capitolan, that's the spirit of inclusivity of what it means to move here is you're one of us now, right? So I think that that should be considered, or not considered rather, is how long someone has been here. And then I understand the concerns about participants entering at an older age because they're new residents but have never done junior guards before, that there might be safety concerns. And so I think once we get moving with this new two-tier or, you know, when we get into the new system with the other tiers, we need to have really strict guidelines about why a participant would be removed, you know, can't do this or unable to achieve this or whatever the case may be, especially because if that removal allows for a non-resident to come off the waitlist, I think there's going to be real big outcry if we end up with the removal of a resident participant that allows for the participation of a non-resident participant. But the safety issue is the number one priority for me and so I do see why that might be necessary. But I just think we're going to have to have really strict guidelines that we can point to and say, I'm sorry, this was in writing, and maybe even have it like as part of the signup process. Like your child, you understand in, in registration that your child may be removed for these X number of safety reasons. I think that's going to be really important. But otherwise, I, I do support moving forward with a two-tier, the resident and non-resident for this year, and setting aside the funding from the Dedicated Children's Fund for funding a new multi-tiered program for the summer of 2026. Yeah, sure, I'll make that.
Can I, can I add something to that real quick? If you don't mind. I think it's also important to reach out to our team TOLA when that new system comes, when we pay for it and, you know, getting that feedback to see, you know, because if we're going to have the opportunity to have multiple tiers, just having that conversation with them would be really helpful to get that insight when building it out to ensure that there's inclusivity on, on all levels, from age to where they live or whatever it is. So I would just add that, that point.
Wait, did you second the motion?
I second.
Just have one last comment. Obviously, this program is, you know, a huge value to the residents and non-residents alike and I would just be interested in exploring opportunities to expand the capacity for seats in this program, or, you know, something similar but analogous to accommodate those who can't get in this program, something along those lines, even if it means going to New Brighton or some other nearby beach. I think that would be a good idea because obviously people love this and, you know, if we can expand it, then let's do that.
I'll add to that. The reason why Capitola has such an impact is because it's one of the best programs that we have in the area, so that's kind of a double-edged sword. And it's unfortunate if maybe a non-resident might not get in, but we really have to take care of our residents first. Just make that clear that, you know, we're going to take care of all the residents first.
Can I just, in your motion, or I don't know if we need to amend it or anything, but that we have multiple days of signup. I don't know if you stated that.
Yeah, I suggested it, but it wasn't part of the motion.
Can I, do you mind if I respond to that?
Yeah.
So while I definitely understand the high-stress experience of registering for anything, we get waitlists within minutes. And so separating it from multiple days would not necessarily impact the stress level or the ability for more people to get in. We are, we are, it's a competitive process to get into our program, but also a lot of the other valued programs within the county. And so the, the culture of getting ready to register, poised, waiting for the countdown, that's, that's already there. If we were to add a, a day or two in between, it wouldn't impact very much. And we started dividing it by the middle of the day because individuals were still chomping at the bit. They were like, is it our turn, is it our turn, is it our turn? Now, from the staff side, having it happen on one day and then open registration happening on the other day, on a different day, like one right after the other, it does actually give us the opportunity to do a lot of the work that needs to happen. And so going from one day to the next day is a really good middle ground for all of those needs.
No, I appreciate that feedback and that's all I was getting at was like make it clear that this priority registration is for our residents and then whether that's the next day, however that works best for the staff, 100% down with that. I just want to be clear that we need to make some priority changes.
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, so the, the issue of the stress from a first-come, first-served could be solved by a lottery based on those brackets that we've been talking about, which would likely take, you know, more administrative work, but could still be worth it.
Well, but then when we move to a multiple-tiered system where it's returning residents, new residents, returning non-residents, returning non, you know, all those tiers, then a lottery wouldn't work because the idea is that you're prioritizing like.
No, the lottery would be within those brackets. So you'd have like a day-long window where, say, residents or returning residents could register after that day is up. Then you take a lottery within just that pool to see who gets in if there's an excess of available seats. Then you have the next session, the next category or priority, you lottery that group separately. So it wouldn't be a lottery amongst all groups combined, it would be per group.
It's interesting, it's not, I'm not willing to move forward with a lottery system today.
Way that you want to relieve that stress. I mean, that's, that's fine.
I think it just transfers the stress from the stress of the immediate timing of waiting in that line to the stress of are you going to be chosen in a lottery? I think it just trans, I don't think there's any way to get stress out of this equation, unless we end up with a program where like pretty much everyone's guaranteed. Yeah.
Yeah, if we, if we could increase our capacity by three times, that we might be able to. But it, any, it's, it is a high-stress experience. Parents are trying to make sure that they know their summer plans and they're doing it along with lots of other summer plans. So it, it is a stressful experience and we do our best to try and make it as smooth as possible.
Not, not to be included in the motion, but just something to think about, I think, moving forward, is we do have our equity swim program, which is designed to kind of funnel people into junior guards. The whole idea was that people can't be in junior guards if they don't know how to swim and so now we have the swim program. I think at some point, there should be some kind of consideration of how to work that, I don't think into the registration necessarily, I don't know exactly what that would look like, but just right now, it's a separate program, but the program is designed to get people to be able to be part of junior guards. So if there's a way to do something to merge those together, I'm not sure exactly what that is, it's kind of a half-baked idea, but it's something that I think is worth looking into and considering. Okay. You have the motion?
I wanted to clarify, so there, I think there were two mentions of amendments to the motion, so Vice Mayor Brook initially, I believe, proposed an amendment, is that true? Okay. The motion, as I have it currently, is to maintain the two-tier registration system for 2025 between residents and non-residents to be spaced over multiple days. No.
Sorry, two days, I guess.
So was that an amendment proposed?
That was me, yeah.
Okay, is, so is the amendment accepted, Mayor Brown, as the original maker of the motion?
It's okay with me, but it sounds like it's not with the secondor of the motion.
Nikki, didn't you say that would be easier for you for two days or would you rather have a morning and afternoon?
It's easier for staff, but it doesn't make a difference in terms of more participants.
Right, there's, there's no, like, so it's not alleviated. The main problem of tonight, and let's focus back on like the purpose of this, is just to ensure that residents get priority. And so I'm not trying to.
Right, but I think the first time that we're doing this, it has to be very clear to the public that residents are to be registered first and then the non-residents. I just think it makes sense to the public that like we are separating this, we're, we're doing the residents first and then the next day, non-residents can register. And then it does sound like it will alleviate some work, not work, but it will stretch that, the extra back, back-of-house stuff that needs to be done over those two days rather than one day that everybody's registering all at once.
So it's a, it's a verbiage update in the handbook and I'm looking at Corey, and does that sound, do you mind, can I ask you to come up?
And maybe to also clarify that we're talking about consecutive days, that there's a.
That there's not a gap.
Between consecutive days.
Yeah, totally.
You're the expert, please.
Could you?
About the two, separating enrollment date for Capitola residents on one day and then non-residents on a different day, does that help you in the enrollment process as they come in?
As far as the immediacy of the impact of dealing with phone calls, dealing with stressed-out parents, yes.
Okay.
Currently, I believe we have it set for an 8:30 priority and then the next day we have 8:30 and 12:30 is how it's currently set.
Okay. So I'm hearing you say, yes, let's do Capitola residents one day, non-residents the next day. So then, yes, I would accept or the motion stands then as read. Thank you, Corey.
Okay, so to clarify, motion to maintain two-tier registration system for 2025, resident and non-resident, include potential reasons for session removal during the registration process and evaluate three-tier registration system for 2026. Motion amended to space registration over multiple days and the amendment is accepted by both the maker and the second.
And the only other thing that I would add is that there was also direction to pull the funding for the new two-tiered system that we're going to look into for 2026 from the Dedicated Children's Fund. Okay. With that, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. With that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting on December 12th at 5:30 PM. Until then, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. Good night.